Welcome to the regular city council meeting for Monday, January 28th, 2019. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Lauren Gregory from the Victory Assembly of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you once again to ask you for mercy and grace and wisdom as we work on the people's business. Lord, help us be of one heart and one mind to work together for the good. We ask this, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move to citizens' communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I do have one speaker card. It looks like it's Marlin, is it Senna?
Good evening. My name is Marlin Senna, and I'm representing the Parks Homeowners Association, and talking about the dumping on Moffett Road. Since your last meeting that we were here, we've had two more dumps in front. One of them was done by one of our homeowners or tenants, and code enforcement had called me and found a letter with an address and a name and was traced to the parks. So as far as the homeowners' association, we are going to bring that homeowner in front of our board for a hearing and determine if we need a fine or whatever it takes to stop that. The other was, I'm assuming it was an outside, that those items have been picked up yesterday. The street is clear and clean now. Hopefully, it'll stay like that, but we don't know. The subject of cameras was brought up last meeting. As far as the homeowners, why do we have to pay for something that is out on city property? So that's an issue there. And some have said, well, will the city go half with the cost so we can stop that? So that's just something that was brought out, so...
I could probably address that as much as we would probably like to be able to do that. If we had to do that around the entire city, I don't think we have enough funding to do that. And it's kind of hard to ask somebody on the east side or west side of town to pay for just in front of your area, so I hope you do understand that.
That I do.
We did hear that the second party, we've, I believe, identified who the second party was that has made the dumping, which wasn't inside your area but was not far from it, so...
Well, it was right next to the first dump that was...
No, no, I'm talking about the people who made the dumping don't...
We caught a second person today, is what he's telling you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we're making progress, and we're hopeful that we'll get this under control.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Jean Yeakley, Series. Recently, in the last couple of weeks, there's been an issue with my favorite area's signs, those particular signs, not because of the civic organization it is, it doesn't matter what it is. If they, I feel that I don't know the answer, I'm going to go find the answer. And it just happens to be Lions Club this time, again. Okay, and I've learned a lot, too. I'm reading a lot more of the ordinance for the city. Toby's helped me out and a few other people in the city, James in the planning department. The issue is placing stuff on right-of-way. Well, now I have a good idea what right-of-way is, but there's no definition as far as how far the right-of-way goes off of the street into the property that someone might own. I can't find anything on that. And the idea of individual groups or persons or whatever, putting stuff on private property and then telling the city that they have permission when I know they don't, I've talked to the Walmart organization. And I just feel that some of these people feel that nobody can touch them, they have some kind of entitlement, whether it be real estate companies in the area that post signs on the sidewalks, in the street, people to garage sales, whatever, they're all in the same category. They don't want to read anything. It's there, and I encourage everybody that can to read the city ordinance, if the ones that are concerning them, especially signage and stuff through your own neighborhood, parking, all kinds of stuff. It's just an abundant thing to read. In the temporary sign category, it says on section 1842-160, temporary signs. Temporary signs are those non-illuminated signs on private property either designed to be displayed for a short period of time, not permanently fixed to a building or property or constructed of lightweight materials such as paper, cloth, cardboard, wallboard, et cetera. No, I mean, a sign approval is required for the following temporary signs. Okay. Nonprofit, in that same category, and number F, 1842-160F, it goes into say nonprofit, civic, and cultural events. Temporary banners, which Toby and I kind of agree that banners fall into signs, and because in the later this word, he gets says something about signs. Temporary banners are to be displayed on private property in connection with nonprofit, civic, and cultural events with the consent of the property owner, subject to the approval of a temporary sign permit. Now, I still don't know, because all the stuff I read, one, I read somewhere, and another thing, and it said city council, this says by the city, so I don't know. Such banners may be displayed up to 14 days prior to the event. Well, Mr. Klein knows signs that are out there for the Lions Club, they've been up more than 14 days. If this is part of it, I don't know. Somebody's got to determine that. 14 days prior to the event, and must be removed within three days after determination of the event. Such signs on or above public property or right-of-way require approval by the city, chapter 1212. And chapter 1212 is basically stuff that tells what the city does and what you can't do, like tear up the right-of-way and damage it and all kinds of other stuff, placement of plants and cement and all kinds of other things. I just want clarification, you know, and again, you know, when these organizations or real estate or anyone else, you know, a building company here in town that's building homes, if they put something in the wrong way, I'm going to question it. I have nothing against anybody, but these things have gone too long, and some of the council members know that, and we need to start correcting. You want to start a new year in 2019? What a way to start. It's small, but it makes the progress on every other thing that we can go and do. So if you can come up with an answer for who's responsible for getting these permits, and why should they continue to put those if they went against the ordinance and placed them first, and then ask for a permit? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
Mr. Yeakley, I'd like to address that thing. You know, first off, let it be known, I am the Lions Club president this year, okay? And I want to give Vice Mayor Rhino a thank you, because when you brought that up to Vice Mayor Rhino last week, I dropped what I was doing, okay? I made phone calls. I made phone calls to our chairman of the committee for the omelet breakfast and asked him if he knew the locations where the signs are and if he got permission for them. Because my understanding according to the ordinance, we do not have to file with the city who we have permission for, okay? As long as we have permission, that's all we need. We don't have to file it with the city of Series. So then I went further out, and I asked Toby about our sign that is in the entrance in the little space as you exit the freeway, right there on Southbound 99.
On Walmart's property?
No, no, wait, I'll get to that one, okay? So I asked the city manager about that. Because we are a nonprofit, a civic group, we are allowed to put the sign there, okay? We get permission from the city, we do not have to file that with anybody.
You're saying that city...
No, wait, would you, I didn't interrupt you, would you please let me talk?
Yeah, I'm just going to ask you something.
Okay, so I took care of it. You didn't like council member, or Vice Mayor Rhino's answer, I guess, so you went to another council member, and I get another phone call. So as far as Walmart, I contacted our chairman of the thing, I told him about Walmart. If you go by Walmart, the sign is being, is removed, as of right now, it's gone, okay? So yes, we're not looking for anything else, we're not looking to take advantage of the situation, but what is bad by me is you turn around and do this, and you spread it out, and we have permission. So if you have an issue with that, come to the civic group and ask them if they have permission.
I did call you.
You didn't call me?
I called your number, it was on the website.
Okay. I can't argue that point, okay?
And as far as councilperson Rhino, I emailed her, I did get a call, but I didn't get an answer to that, she was going to check with someone else. Is that correct?
No, I believe I told you that I contacted the president of Lions Club.
No, I don't recall that. You said something about calling, yeah, him.
I didn't say him, I said I was going to contact the president, and that...
Well, I assume he was the president.
And I did, and that he said he was going to have his committee members take care of it.
Right.
Okay.
So since this all happened, I contacted the chairman of the committee, okay? Everywhere our signs are currently right now, we do have a commitment, we do either have it verbally or in writing, because that's all that's required, of where our signs are. The sign at Walmart has been removed, okay?
Good.
You know, we have been an organization in this town for over 50 years. We donate for scholarships, we do all kinds of stuff, and we have never asked for anything over and above our favors. Just because I'm on the city council, we have never asked for anything. We pay for rental fees like everybody else does, we pay our deposits like everybody else does, we've never asked for exceptions. So for it to come back and me understanding that you're targeting me or this council, or the Lions Club, and that you think we can just run amok like we want to, that is incorrect.
I did not say that. I said it involves everyone in the city that, not the city departments, all the different groups, the real estate people to put signs placed that aren't supposed to be there. I don't know these things, that's why I ask. Okay, at the same time, in this, in the, when they start rewording the code, why don't there be something in there that says that they have the right to do that? It says nothing in there. When I read it over and over in different sections, I found nothing in there. That's why I questioned it. You won't find anything in there that says, well, a civic group or a nonprofit group in this city, if they're from this city, they have the right to go on to right-of-way. If I would have read that, it'd been fine, but there's nothing there that says that. Am I correct?
It says with the permission of the city.
Right.
That should be city staffed. Like I indicated on our phone conversation last week, Mr. Klein asked for permission, that permission was granted.
But they don't detail...
That is city property or right-of-way, in both cases.
It doesn't explain it, it just says city, so it doesn't, you know, I mean, a layman, how do they know?
The city council delegates the authority to the operation of the city to the city manager, that's also in the municipal code.
Don't you believe it could be worded a little bit different?
That's why we're doing a municipal code update.
That would be nice if it was, you know? And on the Walmart thing, you know, some of you guys here that ran in the past, put signs up there again, besides all the other signs.
It's funny, because I actually, I'm going to step in now, I'm past president of Lions Club, it's almost 70 years worth, and this fundraiser that we're doing is going to make about $7,000 for scholarships.
I understand that.
On top of, I had permission from Walmart to put the signs up, and then the second year, thought I had, the second time I ran, I thought I had permission. So, but at the very end of the day, you know what, I appreciate that you come to the meetings and you try to be actively involved, but at the same time, too, it just kind of gets a little bit like, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to be talking about something that we had permission to do, the Lions Club had permission to do, and so...
I have no idea of that.
The omelet breakfast is February 9th, it'd be nice to see you there.
Well, like I said, if there was more of a definition in the code, maybe somebody looking at would say, oh yeah, I understand that now. As far as your Walmart thing, when you did it last time and I confronted you about it, you did not have permission, you know? I personally got emails from a gentleman this last time, too, the other guy quit, but during that particular time, none of you guys had permission to put anything on that property, and as right now, nobody has permission. They're going to supposedly be ground in April, hopefully, and they said it was going to take about a year to finish the Walmart area. And they didn't like the idea that someone could just blatantly go out there and do whatever they want to on their property, because Walmart does, if you call them at the corporate office back in Arkansas, they will tell you in property management, "We condone no signs on any of our properties, active or inactive."
But it makes you feel better, ours are gone.
I appreciate that, I really do. I really appreciate that, you know? Only because that area, too, and tonight, really, I probably wasn't going to say nothing about the right-of-way, but I wanted to kind of educate some other people that I got to educate on right-of-way. But on that area down there, when somebody puts something up, even on the other side where all the trucks are parked, and I called all the time for all those trucks. When signs go up there on these vacant properties, because people just blatantly think, well, it's empty, nobody's going to say nothing, you know, who cares? When somebody puts something up there that's not supposed to be there, then somebody else comes along later, and sometimes a short period of time, a few days sometimes, and puts up something else. Garage sales I've seen there, real estate signs I've seen there, just all kinds of, and it makes a terrible-looking place. You know, right now, with no signs out there, and you come off the freeway and go north on Mitchell, my wife said to me, she goes, man, that looks really nice, that's enticing for somebody to come through here and see this nine-clean atmosphere to where something's going to be developed in the future, and not a bunch of garbage and stuff. I mean, not that they're garbage, but it just attracts something else to happen. All right, thanks. And I'm not attacking any of these organizations. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Lee Brant. I noticed on the way over here, they were talking about the stuff in the curb on Fifth, almost at Acorn, there's a big, huge thing of furniture. It looks like it just came out there today, so I don't know, you know, the property owner is probably going to call Bertolati, you know, and set up an appointment and things like that, you know, and I'm just hoping that it's done. It doesn't look like garbage, garbage, it just looks like old, old furniture. But, you know, so there are steps that can be done, that, you know, that people need to be made aware of, that, you know, they call Bertolati, make appointments, put their stuff out, and then within three days, whatever it is, gets picked up. But, you know, it's quite a pile. I mean, you know, it'd fill that area up, but, you know, okay.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mr. Brant, I think when you, before you put stuff out, this is just to kind of educate people here, that when you call Bertolati, they give you the exact date that they're going to pick it up, and so they ask people not to put it out till the night before. That doesn't mean that everybody abides by that, but that, I mean, they give you an exact date, it's not even a window of like three days, so... You're welcome.
Mr. Wells, I know I commented last time about the notification in the bill, but maybe it would be a good idea to refresh that bulky item.
We are working on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it seems like there is a proliferation of furniture that...
Yeah, we're working on an updated notice to get in, trying to schedule both the bulky items, the leaf and limb pickup, and those, we normally do that once a year, and like the street sweeping schedule usually comes out July 1st as we make those changes. We usually do that all in one package, but we're looking to spread that out and do kind of three different ones, kind of focus on each of those aspects, so street sweeping would be separate from leaf and limbs, a separate item, and try to schedule those within bill inserts over the course of the next, you know, couple months.
Okay.
So we are working on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have one item, the League of California City's Central Valley Division Executive Committee Appointment. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. As we know, the last council meeting, we appointed to all the boards and commissions that are standing. One of the items that was not included, that we were reminded by our league rep, Stephen Qualls, that with the retirement of Mr. Lane, that that is now a vacant position, so they are looking for both an appointee and an alternate to that committee. So look to the mayor for your direction on how you'd like to fill that spot.
Okay. I had a brief conversation with Councilmember DeRocset, I believe you're currently the alternate, or have been the alternate. So my recommendation or suggestion would be that we have you, if you're willing, to rotate into the representative or the main representative, and that I would go ahead and become your alternate, so if the council is okay with that, I would like to make that recommendation.
I'd second the motion.
I'll second. Okay, so you'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion, yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Can, we need a roll call, right, on this?
Yeah.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the eight consent calendar items, or new business, or, well, I guess it's not a conflict on the other, so is there anyone that has a conflict? Okay, hearing none, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled or any other discussion item? Number eight. Okay.
Number seven.
Okay, Councilmember Condit.
I'd like to make an appeal to the council to table item number eight until after new business is discussed.
Okay. Okay, I'll see if, how, I mean, do I need a vote for that, Tom, or is it just a concurrence or...
No, you need a vote for that.
Vote, okay. At this time, can, let me ask you, we don't need a second, you can just ask for a vote, right?
You need a...
You need a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to move item number nine.
Eight.
I'm sorry, move item number eight after item number nine?
Second.
Oh, I...
What's that?
I apologize, if it's just, I apologize, that's just concurrence of the council.
Okay.
Yes, that's...
Well, I'm going to have to go down the line anyway, so it's not going to matter. Okay, so...
I'm okay to move it.
Okay. Councilmember Lane, I mean, Lane. Oh, my goodness. Fine, sorry.
Oh.
Sorry. I will say this out loud, I'm a little bit older and better-looking. You know, after reading staff report on item number nine, I see no reason to move it, okay?
Leave it there.
Okay, and I'm in agreement, I think we should leave it where it is. So at this point, we'll leave it, and we will address the items in the order they were in. So at this point, I will look for direction on the other items. Well, before I ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have an item pulled other than seven and eight? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for direction on the first six items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, A, 4, 5, A, B, C, D, E, and 6.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number seven, final adoption of ordinance number 2019-1051, establishing the prima facie speed limits on various street segments in the city of Series. Vice Mayor Rhino?
I just had some clarification questions, Chief Smith. The latest traffic speed survey that we did of the 43 street segments, are those all of them in Series that we're required to do?
That is correct. Anything, the other segments are either 25 miles an hour by default, or not eligible to be studied.
So every, so now we're good for five years for the entire city?
Correct, yes.
Okay, when I was first elected five years ago, we had the same issue that we were out of compliance, and again, we were out of compliance this time. So is there a way that...
Yeah, we're working on a way to flag that so that it doesn't happen again.
It needs to be flagged, so we take care of it prior to it actually...
Working with the city clerk to make sure we get that flagged on an agenda.
Okay, those are my only questions. Other than the fact, I'm not happy that the speeds are going to increase, but I understand why, and that we have to do it or we can't give out tickets, so...
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment to make sure, because I couldn't answer your question, that usually goes through the engineering department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Sure, please come forward.
I'm Lenny Smith. On Fifth Street, between, you know, from Whitmore down to behind the high school, there's a stop sign there, I forget that road, but down to Acorn, people speed down through there all the time, all the time. I mean, they go lickety-split from the time they turn off of, I think it's Acorn, onto Fifth, because I've found that there's more traffic now on Fifth Street. The only reason I know is because I go down to Michelle's, my daughter, she lives there, and they speed up and down that street all the time, a lot.
Can we schedule, maybe have the speed reader out there at some point? Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yeah.
I mean, if anybody, I went to cross the street to go over to a neighbor's from Michelle's over to Tony's, and this car came, I didn't even see, it beat me almost to the middle of the street.
Yeah.
So, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure. Okay, I'll look for direction on item seven.
Move for final adoption of ordinance number 2019-1051.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number eight, resolution number 2019-09, ratifying the appointment of Daniel Padilla to the position of Director of Engineering Services/City Engineer. Councilmember Klein?
Yes. First off, I want to make the comment that I am in favor of the appointment of Daniel Padilla to the position of Director of Engineering Services and the City Engineer. The concern or question I have on this for future situations like this is on page eight, section N, Licensed Land Surveyor Incentive. You know, this was something that was not part of the job description, it was not part of the requirements or anything like that, but, you know, Mr. Padilla does have a special license as far as a land surveyor, which is, you know, apparently, and I say this strongly, apparently going to save the money for the city as far as contractor services, you know, so there's an incentive pay in for this. But for future references, when it is either implied verbally or implied in writing that it's going to save the city some money, okay, and we're going to offer incentive pay, that, you know, we are aware of how much that it is going to save us and have some kind of visual way of tracking or measuring. visual way of tracking or measuring the savings for the city. You know, I did send Mr. Wells an email, you know, this morning about this situation, and he did get back to me and let me know that, you know, part of the contractor services that they use with a few companies, that it's not broken out as far as the lands, the land surveying, you know, and far as the billing and the cycle. So, it would do a lot of legwork and stuff to find out what the actual savings is to the city. So, for future reference, you know, that I would like to at least have it broken out and be able to see what the savings is for the city. And that's all I have to say on that matter.
Mayor, would you like me to, to the context of that, the land surveyor component, you know, is a contract that we've been handling. It's impossible to have an accurate number because it's directly related to the amount of development and other activities. So, the land surveyor ability to sign off on final maps and other things is directly proportionate to the number of developments that we have. So, to look backwards sometimes is not reflective of what we may see in the future. We do know and confident that having somebody with the skill set that has the ability to stamp a set of plans with a land surveyor is for monument preservation, for meets and bounds, and for final mapping is a significant benefit that will save, on an average year, I would estimate somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000. On a heavy development year, it would be much more than that. But, again, because we weren't tracking it that way, because we didn't have a need to, you know, that's not one that we've had the necessary need to get detailed accounting. Moving forward, having, assuming this gets approved, we won't have the need to track it either because Mr. Padilla will be providing those services. But, we can keep track of what his hours are, if that's the direction of this body, to ensure that we are meeting that savings. I'm confident that we are easily meeting that savings.
And just a couple of comments I can say, because this is obviously in my industry. It's very unique to have a licensed engineer also be a land surveyor. There are some that are out there that were pre-grandfathered, I think it was '82 licensees or before. But, most of those individuals are reaching the retirement age, and they don't really practice surveying. They were grandfathered in. So, to have someone that has both an engineering license and a surveying license is unique. I can tell you this, I don't know what the City of Series charges, because I don't, haven't submitted any maps here, but a residential map check fee in the City of Stockton on residential subdivision can run anywhere from $20,000 on up. And the ability to have somebody that can review plat and legal descriptions, meets and bounds, and look over mapping will definitely save the city a significant amount of money. Again, Mr. Wells is right, it depends upon how much development we have, but I think, you know, this is a drop in the bucket for what we would be paying to have an outside agency plan check those for us. So, I can easily be supportive of it. And if Mr. Padilla wants to come to work for me for $5,000 and review plans, I'd be more than happy to hire him to do that. So, that's just a sidebar. But, anyway, at this time, Councilmember Condit?
Yes. Mr. Wells, did you ask the applicant if he would consider relocating to Series?
Yes, I did.
Was this question asked in the formal interview process?
Yes.
It was asked in the formal interview process?
As delayed in the staff report, the process for the city engineer was a little different because of the lack of a number of applicants. So, we only had three applicants. So, they went to directly to a selection interview, which is meaning they just went directly to me. There was not a panel process used in this situation. But, in that direct interview, that conversation was had with Mr. Padilla.
Okay, was Mr. Padilla the only applicant asked, or was all three asked?
All three were discussed.
Were asked the consideration of relocation?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Rhino?
I would agree with Councilmember Klein that I don't have an issue with the appointment, but I do have an issue with the incentive, the Licensed Land Surveyor Incentive, because I thought when we went through negotiations with all of the department heads this past year, that one of our big concerns was that we get them to an equal level as far as monetary, that they would be, the pay range would be the same, and they were going to have the 7.5 percent, and everything was going to be equal, because they'd have been kind of all over the place. And I do believe, I may have even asked Mr. Wells about until he hired a new person, but I'm not sure about that. So, my concern is that the police chief right now is at step B, which is, well, let me, let me go back. It's been history that the city manager, of course, is considered the number one spot. The number two would be the police chief, and then basically the rest of the department heads are all equal. I mean, even when we did our negotiations, that's how it is. So, the police chief is at step B of his range, and the proposed, the applicant is at step C. But, with the 5 percent incentive, when the city engineer gets to step B and his additional 5 percent, he will be making $8 a month less than our city, than our police chief. Our police chief has a lot more responsibility, and that bothers me. I don't think that, I think we're going to be back at the same place where we had to give certain department heads a bigger boost because we had to have so much of a difference between their pay versus somebody else. That's my concern. And you could say, well, it would take him two years to get there, but that isn't necessarily true, because the city manager can grant merit increases at any point. And again, it bothers me that a city engineer is going to be making $8 a month less than our police chief, which means, Mr. Wells, are you going to be coming back and asking us for an increase for the police chief?
That's not part of this consideration, no. I'm not anticipating any raises to the salary range that was negotiated with the council. This is a unique situation that came up during the negotiation. I had no anticipation, because as Mayor Vera indicated, the number of licensed civil engineers that have a land survey license is very small. The idea that we would have an applicant that had this skill set was not something I contemplated, but having that ability is a benefit to the city. So, you know, we're trying to move forward. This council, I believe, is supportive of making this community better. And being a better community means having good people to drive the change that we need in our community. And I believe Mr. Padilla fits that boat. And having the ability to provide an incentive for a skill set that clearly benefits the city seems to make sense. But, again, it was not contemplated as part of that conversation. Hence, why we put it in the contract. It's something that is unique, but I take the direction of the council. If you feel that is value, then-
It may be unique, but again, I believe the police chief should be making a lot more than $8 a month, more than a city engineer.
Well, that's an item we can bring back for other consideration, if you'd like.
Well, no, because we don't have a lot of money out there floating. So, it's like, why even include the 5 percent? I mean, I'm good with everything else, but not the 5 percent.
Councilmember Klein?
I just, I just want Mr. Wells to understand that, yes, like I said in my first comment, I, I do approve of the appointment of Daniel Padilla. All I'm asking for is in future, you know, in the future, if it's a specialty license or anything like that, whether it's wastewater, you know, or anything like that.
There's really no other comparison to this particular-
And I understand that. That's why I'm bringing it up. That's why, I understand that. That's why I'm bringing it up, you know?
So, when Mr. Padilla retires in 20 years, we'll make sure that it's there. We've got to hook for at least 20 years.
And that's why I'm in fully support of the appointment of Daniel Padilla. We had a conversation earlier today, okay, and, and, and I will, I will make the motion, okay? But, I just, I just made that comment for future reference. That is the sole purpose of that. So, we have an understanding that, you know, those things could be addressed as they come up, instead of reading it and saying, well, we've never had it before, okay? So, I am a total supporter of appointing Daniel Padilla to the position.
Councilmember Drossit?
I'm not a city engineer, so I don't understand all that. I do understand this, though, that if we're able to save money and expedite the jobs faster and better, then I'm all for it. I welcome you here. It's great. It's great for the city to have you come back to Series. So, I'm all on board and giving him the 5 percent. I don't think it's our job to necessarily micromanage city manager. I mean, if you don't make the right call, then it's on you at the very end of the day. I know I say that all the time. But, at this here, I see this as listening to the mayor and to the city manager, being not a city engineer. But, when I see that we're going to save money doing this, I'm all in.
And I do agree, I just was asking what the, you know, what the savings is. That's it.
Right.
That's the sole purpose of that, so.
And not to beat a dead horse, but I could tell you, he could probably seek someone with this qualification for the next five years and not find anybody that has it. Just to put it in perspective, there's give or take 3,000 practicing land surveyors in the state of California, where there's 40 million people. To put that into perspective, and when you cross-reference that with how many of those 3,000 actually have an engineering degree? Not very many. So, to have someone that has that skill set, it, I mean, now, I'm going to say this, if the police chief needs to be making more money, then I'm supportive of that, too. I don't know that most of my colleagues here are, but anyway, I, that's another discussion. I can support this 110 percent, because again, it's a, it's a skill set that if I were advertising for, I doubt that I'd be able to find it. I doubt that I would be able to get someone with his skill set. It just, it doesn't happen. And what we're offering here, like it or not, it's the industry standard. I know. I know what it is. I know what I'm paying my people, so. And they don't have LS degrees, so. With that, I'll open it up to the public, if anyone would like to comment on this item. Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or direction.
I move to adopt resolution 2019-09. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing, new business. We have one item, the interview question policy. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. As was brought up at the last council meeting on the 14th, staff and our legal team of Churchill Wyatt have done the investigation to the question that was posed of whether we can ask the question legally, of whether, as part of the interview process, the consideration of whether someone would be willing to move to the City of Series. The legal opinion is there in the staff report. I won't go over the details of that opinion, but primarily, yes, you can ask the question. However, it does come with some legal risk of the potential outcomes of what, how that question is used. So, staff does not recommend moving forward with that, that policy question at this time. Would be open to a direction that the council may wish to do on other items or other things that we may be able to do to get to a similar arrangement or some other opportunity. But, the staff recommendation, per the legal opinion, is to not incur the additional risk that may be imposed if we move forward in that question.
Okay, Councilmember Condit?
Yes, I think we proved tonight that you can ask the question, since Mr. Wells clarified that he asked all three applicants, including Mr. Padilla. And we look forward to working with you, sir. But, for the record, I would like to just clarify the language on the recommendation action item. It's, I did not use willingness to move to Series, but to consider moving to Series. To consider is to carefully think about something before making a decision. Willingness is having readiness or being prepared to do something. Those are two different things. So, I'm asking that on future applications, that the question be asked, even writtenly, it doesn't have to be verbally asked, on the city's employment applications, if the candidate would consider relocating to Series if they do not already live in Series. So, I think this is good policy, and I think it's the best thing for Series moving forward. So, I hope the rest of the council agrees.
Okay, question for you, Tom. What if we were to do something and in the posting and said something along the lines of relocation within the city limits desirable? Is that something that, and we don't ask that question, but it's in the posting?
That would be a safer way to do it. Usually, when that happens, it's paired with an incentive, too.
Right.
But, I guess to answer your base question, that would be a safer way to do it, yes.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from the council or ask for anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Councilmember Condit?
Yeah, I just think the incentives loses the, I guess, the details in the weeds. I think if you start getting incentives, to use Mr. Drossit's line from last meeting, it is a slippery slope. This is a simple question. It doesn't have to be verbal, and it just is simply included as a checkbox on the application. That's it.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for the public. I'd like to speak on this item.
My name is Sheila Brant, and I cannot understand why the city would not want that to be a question for any of the new hires that we have for the heads of the different departments. Back in 1997, when Don Pedro Reservoir had to open up our gates and we flooded this whole area, I was working at Modesto Irrigation District. And they had to put a message across all of our screens stating that if you lived south of the river, you had 20 minutes to leave work to get home, because otherwise, there was going to be no way to get home, because every bridge coming south was not going to be passable. So, my question is, is if you have heads of different departments, if, let's hope this never happens, but if some type of a disaster happened and you had the chief of the police or chief of, you know, fire or whoever, and they don't live in our area here in Series, and they are north of the river, how are they going to get over here to help us and supervise what needs to be done? So, I would think that you would want all of your heads to live here, number one. Number two, I would think you would want your management to live here, because they should have pride in the city that they are governing, that they should want to be part of the community, want to be involved in events that happen within our city. I've been on a lot of committees for the last few years, and I have to say, I'm very disappointed in a lot of our heads that never show up at any of the functions we have. And in a city that's as small as we are, I would think that all heads would be coming to different community activities to show your support for the city that you work for. So, I personally don't see a reason why that cannot be asked. You're not saying that we will not hire you if you will not relocate. We're just asking you, would you think about relocating? Would you bring your family here? Would you be willing to support us? We're going to hire you. We're going to pay you a lot of money to be a head of a department. We don't want you spending your money somewhere else, buying a home somewhere else, sending your children to schools and other areas. You should be here in the city that you're going to be in charge of. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Jeanne Yeakley. Yeah, on that same subject, is there anything legal or illegal about providing these department heads with some kind of, well, I hate to say it, because we're talking about money and monetary, or some kind of housing supplement of some kind for them to stay for so many years? Or, what can we do for these people, like this lady said, to keep them here, to whether- What can we do for these people, like this lady said, to keep them here so where they're more active in our community? Is there anything?
There's nothing illegal in that regard, no.
Could we do anything? I mean, has that ever been discussed with the city council to keep these people or to, the ones that we don't have, to draw them towards the city to get these department head jobs?
There's currently no incentives in place and that, to my knowledge, has not been discussed by this council in the past.
It's very rare in this area to have department head incentives that address that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
I agree that it would be wonderful if all the department heads lived in the city. I know when I first came to work for the city in 1979, I lived in Manteca and I commuted. And then I left and then I came back again and I lived in Manteca again. And then when I hadn't been working here very long, I decided I was tired of commuting. I wanted to move to Series, bring my son, I was a single mom at the time, bring my son, have him go to school here, and that's what we did. Then when I got married and we bought a house, we bought a house in Series because we both worked here and we thought it was important that if you work here, you should live here. But that was our personal belief. And I think even if a department head or an employee does not live in Series, they can still participate a lot in what we have going on. We were at lunch Saturday at the new Fresh Fork, I think it's called, at Mitchell and Service, and in walked a, I guess he's a mid-manager, a mid-manager. I know for a fact he lives in Modesto. It was Saturday, but he wanted to try out this place and so he came here and he supported a local business. So I think, while I agree with, on some level, with Councilmember Condit, I have a concern that asking that question, just as our city attorneys, you know, they're finding, it could become a legal matter. And I think maybe it needs to be something that our city attorney, our city manager kind of stresses to the employees and his department heads that you need to start participating. You need to be part of the community that is paying you so well. If you don't live here, you need to come to functions and you need to start participating. That's, personally, that's what I believe.
Councilmember Condit?
Yes. There's liability in everything the city does, is there not?
Of course.
Okay. Well, this is not an enforcement issue. I want to make that very clear. It's just a simple question. All I'm asking is that we set future precedents for future applicants. That is it. As clear as that. I just want it mentioned on future applications. And it is not a negative reflection of our current department heads by any means. It's just setting a precedent for future applicants. That is all I'm asking. It's a simple question.
Any other comments? Okay. I'll look for a direction or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a measure.
A motion, sorry, what was that?
I'd like to make a motion that on the city's employment applications, if the candidate would consider relocating to Series, if they do not already live within the city.
Okay, we have a motion.
Can I clarify, just a question, is that for all employees or just department heads?
Well, on future applications. If you're applying for a position with the City of Series, I would like it to be on applications if they would consider relocating to Series.
Okay, so all employees. I just wanted to clarify that because we talked about department heads, I wanted to clarify.
Well, with the emphasis on department heads, of course, but I think it's fair to put it on future applications. And again, it's not an enforcement matter. That's not what I'm after whatsoever and it's not a mandate to live here. It's just simply consideration if they would relocate.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. I would think the motion dies then. So I'll look for either further discussion or another motion.
Can I have clarification? Mr. Wells, are you from here on out going to be asking these applicants if they would consider living in Series like you did tonight with Mr. Padilla and the other two?
That specific question, I can't commit, but again, I would suggest that we have a conversation at our goal-setting meeting on February 8th about the strategic goals of this plan. And I think there's other ways that we can accommodate and obtain your, and reach your same goal without committing to asking that question because I believe there's several different ways that we can approach this situation and this subject and get you to the goal that you're looking for.
Well, my goal is to have it on the application and anything short of that, I'm going to probably have a problem with. But you did ask Mr. Padilla, you did ask the other two applicants and that's why I voted for him in good faith, but verbal ask isn't going to do it for me anymore. I would like to see it on the application for future applicants. So, thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we continue this and discuss it during the goal-setting in February.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Can I have clarification on what we're voting to put on the goal-setting meetings?
Correct.
Aye.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Councilmember Referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item referred?
How about item number 10?
Item 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number 10, discussion on Office of the City Treasurer election discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. As councils aware, Measure X was placed on the November 6, 2018 ballot to ask the voters to consider changing the treasurer position from an elected position to an appointed position. Unfortunately, that measure did not pass. It only received 35.47% affirmative votes. With that, the position of the treasurer will end at the end of this year and we up for reelection in November of 2019. In order to move forward, council in essence has two options. One would be to conduct that election, which would be a special election. We estimate that cost to be somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000. The second option would be to move the position, extend the position to align with the city council next election, which would be in 2020, similar to what council did with the terms of each of your offices. So the staff recommendation would be to extend the term. Mr. Herbert is in the audience this evening. I've had a conversation with him in the past week, asking if he was willing to extend the term. He's been the treasurer for a number of years now. He is willing to entertain and extend his term for an additional year and then the council would be able to consider in 2020 how they would like to proceed with filling in that position or just continuing to keep it on as an elected position. So any questions, be happy to ask.
Are there any questions? At this time, I'll open it up for the public. Does anyone like to comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
I'll move to make, I'll make a motion to extend the city treasurer's duties until the next election process.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now we'll move to councilmember referrals. Anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to reports. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Klein?
Yes. I had the luxury this morning, come down here to talk to the city manager and, at perfect timing, because they had, the fire department has established a, what would you say, a new...
Tradition.
Tradition, there we go. A new tradition of raising the flag on the beginning of your shift and it symbolizes the start of duty and, you know, for Chief Wise, I was lucky enough to be here. It was a great ceremony. I wish you all the luck and, you know, I think it's a tradition that the fire department started and I think it's a wonderful tradition that, you know, hopefully, you know, we get to participate in those as they come up and the council is present, but, you know, I hope that our personnel stand, stay around for a long time so we don't have a bunch of turnover and be doing it all the time. So with that, nothing else.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing.
Councilmember Condit?
Yes. I attended the California League of Cities training for newly electeds in Sacramento recently. It was a great experience and I was happy to meet with several of our newly elected officials from our region. I also participated in the homeless survey here in Series. I want to thank our Parks and Rec manager, Matthew Lorr, for his efforts in organizing the count here in Series, as well as Sergeant Jason Cooley and Code Enforcement Officer Roger Alvarez for their participation. It was also an honor to attend the Series Chamber Insulation Dinner. I know Councilmember Klein was there as well and it was great to witness former councilmember Ken Lane, received Citizen of the Year. I will also be conducting my weekly office hours again this Saturday here at the Community Center between 12:00 and 2:00 p.m. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that there are a lot of things that a lot of us department heads participate in and one of the things that I enjoy the most is the Art of Spotlight that's upcoming and I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Mr. Hallahan?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Ms. Dean highlighted the one item that I was going to, is the Art of Spotlight for next Thursday, so thank you, Ms. Dean. The date, sorry, I didn't write it down. It's next Thursday, the February 7th and it should be on the council's calendar.
Mr. Westbrook?
Nothing.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Collins? Jeremy? Ms. McCoy? Kevin? Welcome aboard. So the way that this works, I don't know if you've been around, is we'll go around and if you have anything that you would like to say, you're welcome to come up to the podium and use that time to share. You don't have to, but we will go around the room and ask, so, okay? And Supervisor DiMartini?
Nothing to the nightmare.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have no closed session, so we will adjourn to our next regularly, well, actually, we'll return to our, adjourn to our goal-setting meeting, which will be on Friday, February 8th at 8:30 a.m. Thank you.